He hasn't been able to get ahold of Andy and he needed to have something approved before he could go to the bank or whatever it was, but apparently there's about five people that have been trying to get ahold of Andy once since Thanksgiving, so I don't really know what the issue is. But he put a letter of resignation in.
I'm afraid we're a rather messed up town. I need to reach that kind of conclusion, but dear me.
Yeah, and Joan Aubrey resigned from the ZBA, so they're looking for somebody to fill that position.
Who's that?
Joan Aubrey, she's very much involved with the library.
Okay.
She's on the ZBA.
I hope she was just too busy, because I know she's on the Metro Electric.
They really didn't say why she resigned and I didn't raise my hand to ask them.
We're nice, happy, focused, and bored here.
Yeah. But I missed the big excitement of the meeting. Or John will be able to tell us now.
So what was the hearing about originally?
This was the budget. This was at the second election meeting and they had a -- I didn't see the preliminary budget one. I was just saying that I missed the excitement there at the very end of the meeting.
Excitement, very end. Oh, about Andy?
About Andy and Bill resigning.
Yes.
I missed that one.
Why did Bill resign?
You gotta stay to the end. You gotta stay to the end or you might have. Oh man, see what you missed?
Jerry came, he took me out here, so I said, okay, fine.
Well, Phil was in, Joan, what happened?
Phil resigned today.
How come?
Personal reasons. He's gonna stay on for the rest of this year, but you know, they'll be have to elect another selectman in March. That always was shocking, I had no idea it was coming. And Andy Chalmers resigned as well.
What were his resigns? What were Andy's? Andy Chalmers' resigns?
There's a letter, basically wasn't happy with a minority of people kinda pulling this chain unofficially.
That's true.
No, so he didn't feel supported, I think. Tried to resign. That was exciting today. I was very shocked about Bill, though. Again, I don't have any idea why. So it goes.
It's like I missed the best part of it.
I tell you, you gotta stay to the end.
I guess so.
Stay to the end. Can't tell the players on the scorecard.
Wow. Things I miss. Well, I'm not gonna resign today.
Go ahead.
Give us a little heads up.
Yeah, really.
Just spring it on. Well, why don't we start the meeting? We're all. So I'll call the meeting to order. Betsy, you recognize everybody that's sitting at the table?
I'm gonna take a minute.
Oh, yes, we're gonna minute you.
Switch tools.
Not tuning in here, Ken?
Anybody else want a copy of the agenda?
Yes, I was just trying to get off my little iPad and it won't come up. It does, I think it doesn't require passwords for now offices.
I'll take one.
I read on it.
Well, it's quizz-a-ma-dah. What's happening at 7:20?
All business, new business.
Right. All night.
Oh, 9:30.
Let's go on.
For anybody's information, the Northern Lights start anywhere from 10 to 2 o'clock tonight.
10 to 2?
10 to 2.
Oh, yeah.
Because we pull up layers and whatever.
And the moon will be setting around. At least if we're getting low by then.
About 10, while it's going down at 10. Why don't that be over at 9:30?
Yeah, it's getting warm. It's a quarter moon, so it's high at midnight. By 10 it's 8:30.
Please just be 8:30.
And then has everyone had an opportunity to peruse the minutes of the previous meeting?
Have a seat.
Joan, I have a moment back down here.
Slide over here. You're giving the nice thoughts. I didn't want to get my face in front of that camera. My balls.
If anybody wants some mince to skin away with or whatever.
I brought coffee tonight.
I have a cold, so if I start coughing, I'll have one of those.
Thank you.
Do you want to write down that one?
Sure. I have my eye down this. It doesn't feel like I have a show over yesterday. Like you said, never when you're eye.
Well, then, I will accept them. So move.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have the minutes of our previous meeting. Well done. So, I have on the agenda ongoing discussion of the minutes. Because now we've -- oh, I should thank the announcement. Tara Benford got whatever you're getting over.
Oh, really?
And called me and she was, had gone home yesterday, no, the day before yesterday, from work, thinking she'd get rested up and get better, got worse. So she's laid out and apologizes, but cannot make her next meeting. So she did ask if we would have --
You're doing your thing.
A work session. On a, not all the way to our next meeting, have a work session before then that enough people could attend, and then she would come over for that and make her presentation at that time. Which, if we can accommodate that, I think would be a good idea, because that's gonna move the process along. If we wait another month just to get the preliminary, then everything gets pushed back and pushed back. So if we could do that, I think it'll be good. Nice guy.
So you wanna propose an intermediary meeting before the next meeting?
Yes, and we'll post it as a work session, because that is what it will be.
Shall we discuss a date now, then?
Yeah, it will be.
Does she have any dates that she suggested that would fit into her schedule?
I was gonna get back to her to see if she had dates that were more agreeable for her. So if everybody's good with the idea of having the work session, then I'll get back to her tomorrow and see what kinda dates she has open.
Should we try to stick with a Thursday night, which might be either the 16th, 23rd, or the 30th? It was all clear here so far, nobody's taking this meeting else at those times.
Those are all Thursdays. Okay, I'll call her tomorrow and see what she has open. So that does that. So then I'll go back over the, I don't wanna keep beating this minute-taking to death, but there now are two people. Martha Tobin said that she would do the minutes from the video. In other words, get a copy of the video or, you know, and do it. I'm not sure if that would work out for us. We'd have Martha's, you know, take on our meeting from the video, which is totally accurate. But I'm thinking that we'd probably be happier with somebody right here.
Having just watched the video the last meeting since I missed it and wanted to know what Tara had to say, I would not recommend that, because there are people who are at the other end of the table who are speaking softly and you can't hear them.
And also, if there's no, if we don't go around the table and introduce ourselves, the person who's looking at the video doesn't really know exactly who's here, unless you happen to recognize the voices or something.
So I don't think that, and I think she was just offering that as a way to get done. Personally, I'm happy with Betsy doing the minutes, if she cares to do that.
I'd be delighted to do it as long as, you know, people want. I know that there was some dissension about it last time, but I try to be really straightforward and just record what we discussed.
Well, I think that's totally workable. I know that the Conservation Commission has a member take the minutes of their meeting.
Was the dissension Larry's comment about the transparency?
Yeah.
I read that in the minutes, I didn't understand it, but I'm not the brightest guy, so you know, I just, whatever my head.
And the thing is, that's why we come back to the table and have the minutes and go through them and say, did they work? I mean, did they represent your ideas? Did your thoughts get put down? Are you happy with it, so?
I think as long as I've been on the board, the minutes have been mostly written by the chair anyhow. You know, the chair has always taken the notes from the minute-taker of then.
Yeah, when Sue Way used to do the minutes, she would also leave out those with not or some kind of significant.
So I think the minutes are always going to be, in part, at least, you know, from the assembly on the board, usually the chair, and we all look at them and make any.
I think at any of our big meetings that we have, public meetings or anything, we'll try to get somebody to come in. That way you can participate and not have to worry about writing things down.
That was one of the issues, that she'd be busy taking notes and not being able to participate.
Yeah, I understand that.
So anytime we have, you know, a public hearing or something, we just try to get somebody in, and then we can go back, and we might get somebody right from the office. I mean, as a part-time thing, I think that may work. Is that true?
Well, they won't allow them.
Oh, they, now it's bad, okay.
The chair tracked that down, that won't allow.
Okay. Well, I will contact these other two ladies from the Conway Selectman's Office and see if they would come in on a, you know, if I gave them even a month's notice or, you know, a couple of weeks' notice, if they'd come in and do the minutes for us.
Joan, did you say that the people in the office are not allowed to, as you just said?
No, I can't remember the exact reason, but it had something to do with the hours and things like that.
So we can't rely on them even for a special meeting?
Nope. They can attend the meeting, but they can't take notes.
Unless they wanna be here for fun.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna go on with what we have in place. That's Betsy. Thank you.
Sure.
So we don't have the build-out study to go over, so what did I bring in? Oh, it's that Happy Time Year. We have to talk about some budgeting issues. Because we're gonna have to request funds for this upcoming town meeting, and we're gonna lose, I think it's use it or lose it for the money we raised for the build-out study.
Actually, we encumbered that today.
Oh, you did?
Yes, since we had a contract signed, we have to honor that contract, so we're allowed to come to the fund, so we have that money as of today.
Excellent. Excellent.
$13,750.
Yep.
We don't have to use it all, but we have.
We don't have to spend all that, but we have access to it. That's great. And so we'll have to see if we are going to incur printing costs, because we're gonna have to print up a questionnaire eventually when we get the build-out study, and then we form up all our ideas, what we put out as a community questionnaire, and then we have to print it. I don't think that that gets printed on the printing machine in there. So we'll probably wanna have some money for that. I do have our expenditures for this year, which, I'm sorry. Oh, it came to $3,975.37, and that's $2,500 in the build-out. So we really haven't spent, you know, we've spent $1,400, $1,500. And I think we should budget more than that for next, this coming year, because I think we will have more expenses. We're probably gonna have postage, too, because if we get that questionnaire put together, I think we're gonna have to put it out in the mail on our own and not wait around for the tax bills. Because I would think and hope that we would have that together. When do the tax bills go?
June.
June. So I would think we'd have it together before then, and I think it would be appropriate to send it right out as soon as we have access to it.
What was the total amount, please, you said we spent this last year? 39 what?
It was 39, I'll give you the, how about if I just give you this? Okay, so we have expenses for the Daily Sun, we had a legal Hastings Law Office, was I think that you had some questions with them when we were...
Before the...
Before the last town meeting. I don't, is there a policy in place about who can call the town?
There used to be. It was supposed to be authorized by the chair, yes.
We decided that they think...
It's the new chairman's. Well, the new chairman's.
I think more so, there was a couple of years ago, we talked to Peter Matty quite a bit, and so, and part of it was that, you know, we were overlapping a lot, which I know we did, sort of agreed to make, you know, coordinate at least, so that if nothing else, we're not asking the same question, you know, to your legal.
Duplications.
That, and we don't, I mean, they, it is the town attorney, but it's not open for the town to just call up and look for legal advice, even if it's town business, it should go through the selectman's office. That way you can say, no, we've just talked to him, and here's what we got back, so. Okay.
Also, I think it's similar with the local government center, we tried to limit, you know, I think it was at the, I think what we originally decided maybe was at the planning board chair's discretion as to, either he himself would call or designate somebody to call on a question.
Well, I don't know if that's set as policy, or if we're...
It was not to abuse, it doesn't cost anything to call the RDC.
Right, but don't wanna waste their time either. I mean, with three different people calling over the same thing.
You can't get three different answers every time you hear it.
Three different attorneys there, so.
That is true.
I have called a couple of times with the same issue.
So, let's see, does anybody have any other ideas on the money that we should ask for at town meeting? I'll put it together pretty quickly and then try to get it out to everybody of what I think would be a budget. I think, aside from the build-out study, I think we asked for $6,000 last year, thinking we were gonna have the printing costs and what have you. But you say that's already designated. Can we use it for just the build-out study, or can we use it for like the mailing of a...
$6,000 that you budgeted?
The ones, the funds that you encumbered.
Oh, the funds we encumbered, yes.
As long as we stay within the build-out.
You can't, you know, buy a new computer for an office or something.
No, no, but just as long as, because then we don't have to ask for as much money this year, which I think would be appropriate.
Don't forget to put in whatever you're gonna be paying Betsy, too, so.
Right.
Into the budget.
Right, to keep that, so we had, planning board minutes were, last year were $185, but I think that if we just figure, what, ah, it's 12, yeah. So we'd say $1,200 for minute-taking.
And last year, I guess if it was 185 total, we weren't paying Ella ourselves.
Right.
That was part of her salary, I guess.
Right, and that's probably part of the conflict that...
That's why we can't do it anymore, I think. Outside of a working day or whatever.
Yeah. So, I'm just gonna keep taking, lost my notes already. Have you taken all my notes? Then we have to make a statement in there of what the planning board accomplished this year, and I have a copy of the very nice statement from last year, but I can't copy that.
Just change the wording a little bit.
But in that there was a changeover of, certainly like to have Scott's input and everybody's input as to what we did. I mean, we've done a lot of work on the master plan. We approved Gabriel Brown plotline adjustment.
Simone.
Simone, went to the Conservation Department, that was a good thing. Any other accomplishments?
I was heard they're giving the town to approve the build-out study. Did you mention that?
Well, you can always go through the minutes in meetings.
Yeah. But, you know, if anybody had just anything on the top of their head, I thought I'd get it down now. Yeah, the build-out study. Money, and then...
Building ordinance, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying.
This is you.
This is you, yeah, yeah.
I don't think the planning board wants to take a lot of credit for that, because I don't think that...
Did a lot of work on it, though.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we, yeah, okay. That's true, we did.
Gotta take the credit with the blame, man.
Well, I think that was a good example of boards working together, cooperation.
Yeah, there was a lot of back and forth with the selectmen on that.
And I think both boards contributed to the final piece.
So that puts us back into the master plan. Does everybody remember right where we left off?
I guess we didn't discuss it last time, but if you remember.
No, we had Tara Benford last time, and that pretty much took up the meeting, so it's the meeting before that.
Last time we talked about, in terms of working on itself, the survey, which was why we got this through that.
I think we can still continue going through the first part of the, what's called revision statement.
That's right.
Because I think people who read it through realize that there was a lot here that probably didn't have to be changed. I can't tell from mine, I have a lot of pencil marks, but were those ones from the meeting or from my reading?
Well, the November minutes, talking about at the, on the economy goal, we got the three rejected, that's page five, and...
Do we need extra copy?
So we finished the first two policies on the top of page six of the master plan that I have.
Yes.
And that's...
Municipal service, can we get through that?
Oh, is that right? Yes, municipal service is a goal, so we did finish the economy goal, and on the top of page six, we did the first two policies there, but not the third.
Now, I have a flag on the economy goal. Were we gonna work that harder? Maybe I was just ruled one quicker.
Well, I've got changes marked, I don't know whether...
No, it just, what the November minutes say is, we began with the economy goal, with the second objective of the first policy, add throughout the town districts, following home-based businesses and following appropriate locations, add, and small offices and independent retail businesses in commercial districts, and at the second policy, delete the first and second objectives, and change the third to read, maintain and update the capital improvements program.
Okay.
And then at the municipal services goal, delete the second policy and its objectives, and at the third policy, first objective, add, and limitations following potential and optimal uses. Change the second objective to read, with citizen input, develop a master plan for utilization of town-owned lands, and at the fourth policy, change the, develop and implement a plan to agree with the compliance of any municipal facilities which do not already comply.
Right.
And then it said, board members decided to suspend this discussion until a future meeting.
Okay, then, I'm just gonna go back to the, develop a capital improvement program on page five, middle of the, the third objective under the second policy of the economy goal. Just to see if we should start breaking out of this meeting and doing a little homework, where we're, you know, one or two people talk to the road agent, the police department, and see what their long-term capital... and see what their long-term capital goals are. I think that's what we did last time, was just get out there and get them, and this is probably a good time of year because I think they're all thinking about their budgets right now. And they have to get it down for the warrant. So, they may be thinking about, well, what could or should happen in the future? And if we get into, you know, talk to them now, we might get some good.
Budget maybe next Wednesday? Is that for the whole, whole of town, don't you?
Next Wednesday.
So, does that idea appeal to anybody? All right, I'll go talk to the road agent and the police department.
I saw the police department budget.
So this is to update the capital improvements plan, you're going to talk to those.
Well, I think, all I would do is take this and say, okay, here we are, working on the master plan again, you're thinking about your budgets. What do you think, you know, the future holds? And get them thinking about it. I can do that on my own, just go around and talk to these people. Excuse me.
So that's, you're kind of confusing out two different processes. One process is the master plan, and the other process is the capital improvements plan.
Well. Yes, yes, you're right. There is a separation there. But where does the capital improvements fit into the master plan?
Well, the fact that it is our plan to maintain an updated plan, updated capital improvements plan.
But we do that separately?
Right, that's one of the jobs, like all of these other policies and objectives are particular jobs that need to be done. Some of them are, are ongoing and pure specific, and some of the jobs in this edition have already been done, so we've knocked them out of the updated, the updated plan.
Maybe one of those things you could do, since we are really focused on the master plan now, to say, you know, as we're trying to develop our policies for the master plan, do you have any input for us on things that we could consider putting into the master plan as goals that the town should adopt?
Yeah.
For example, maybe upgrade the traffic flow at the transfer station?
That is a good idea. Why someone hasn't had a horrific accident?
I, I, I can't believe it, really.
Or gone into the dumpster.
That has happened.
Really? Gone into the dumpster?
No, I mean, not all the way.
Maybe some planning for the tree downtown to get lights all over the whole tree, not just one half of it.
That was an electrical problem. We fixed that, now it's done.
Yeah.
We got some time for Christmas, at least. I guess it's supposed to be colored, too.
Okay, so we did get, so we want to push on with the, what is it, the third? For the fifth policy, uh, municipal services goal. In all appropriate instances, Lieutenant Jackson shall work in cooperative, cooperative fashion with the surrounding towns in White Mountain National Forest to ensure maximum benefit for all the towns in the region.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I think that one of the things that probably fits right there in that they've brought up national forest is the parking up at Prospect Farm.
Didn't they build a parking lot?
Yeah, it was a little further up.
Oh, and for all that, I believe they've put a parking lot in for ski touring people.
And is that accessible all the way up to the parking lot?
I don't know.
Driveable?
I know Sam told me he's on the ski touring board, and he said that the logging company had plowed, even though they had to be out by snowfall, apparently, they did not get out by, before the first few snowfalls. And they plowed their access. So, of course, we've had some snowfalls and ice and so on since then. I don't know the current condition. But I think that's a good point that, um, I mean, in the past, we've had to work with the national forest, the town has worked with the national forest on how, how many years they can do their tree cutting in whatever place it is. And I don't know if they exceeded it this year or not, but that's certainly an element of the cooperation. It's important that they be able to have access, but it's also important that ski touring be able to do its thing. So it's a balance.
And I think that was built into the, the forest plan, or the management plan, that they put out every five, five years or ten. And that was built in as to what season they could go in and when they had to be out, as you mentioned.
Especially, and, and partly because they, they tear up the roads to some extent, with all the heavy trucking.
Well, it, it's a balance because they, they have to truck.
You bet. And it's good for the town.
On our roads.
It's good for the town, you know, we, we want it to happen.
Right, and that's the marketable research source of that.
But then they're, they're closed down from trucking when the road ban goes, so they're not damaging roads.
Right. But, yeah, winter's the time to do it, and that's why there has to be a balance between ski touring too, because they have to give out some areas some years.
Right, absolutely.
Because they just have, that's when they have to harvest, so. It's a good dialogue. All right. Everybody should step in and read anything they would like to, so that Betsy doesn't have to, she's gonna lose her voice if she keeps trying to read stuff to us. The town will support the highway department's provision of acceptable safe travel ways throughout the town while retaining its rural character. There's some, probably some discussion of the reflectors and signage that goes up. There's always more and more signs, and a lot of it has to be.
Then you're dealing with a state plan.
Yeah. So that's a pretty good statement there. I mean, we have any comments on the objectives? Evaluate the existing town roadways, develop a long-range program to maintain or improve the present roads. I mean, we've talked about ways to raise money so that it's not always a bandage. Every time that they fix the road, that they go in and really do it, and they did an awfully nice job on the Dundee Road. Of course, they had FEMA money and other funds, but at least I thought was spent really well. And did a nice job, did the drainage, did it so that it's probably gonna hold up for a number of years. And we need to think about doing that for the rest of the roadways in town. I mean, every time we fix something, you know, maybe we should really think about digging in. I think it's.
Reclaiming, reclaiming.
Okay, so, that's pretty good. Moving along now. The town will provide information inspection. Now, as I move on from this, I'm thinking that we're going to include it in our new master plan, the wording that's here. Is that correct?
I think that's what we've been doing, is assuming that this is a draft and we're updating.
Yeah, okay, because that's what my notes have been.
Yeah. Because I don't think anyone has said, well, we gotta check the whole thing out and start fresh.
And then when we get the survey back, if there are things that relate to some of this, we'll try to reject them, I would guess.
Right. Okay, policy, the town will provide information inspection suppression for inherent dangers of fire, though of service required by the community. It sounds to me like that we're trying to say, provide a fire department. Is that correct? And I think that having a fire inspector, a professional fire inspector for the commercial buildings in town is really important also, especially since so many of our commercial enterprises are restaurants and inns. That's where people gather, and that, the places where you really have to adhere to.
Do they get regularly inspected, though? Do they get regularly inspected?
They're supposed to be inspected every six months. Or no, I think it's every year, at least once every, every year. And as far as I know, it's being done.
Is there any?
I think it was done on the Wentworth Development.
Well, no, that, I mean, we obviously have some.
I'm not sure who does it, if it's the fire, is it the state fire marshal or the town?
Town.
We had Mr. Gudrow from Berwind come down. Now, is he still doing it?
Yeah.
He's very good.
Remember that amazing tale where Eagle Mountain House was refusing, I think, to have an inspection where, I mean, they had to have the inspection, but they were refusing to have the actual systems tested. And finally, whoever it was said, I insist on testing them.
And it didn't work.
They discovered that most of them had no water coming out, and one of them or two of them maybe had little rusty water coming out. And they'd been paying for their own quarterly inspection with Pope or whatever it was that was doing it. So it was thanks to maybe Mr. Gudrow. Who held their nose to the groundstone.
Right, and that's, I mean, all of it, I mean, figure motels have to have, you know, the smoke detectors and interconnected in the hallways, and there's an awful lot to it.
Eagle Mountain House is a tinderbox.
And Eagle is one of the prime, I mean, a just wood-framed building. You certainly want a sprinkler system.
It's been saved many times.
Right.
Many times. Guy felt, now, in July, you don't expect to have heat. His wall was warm, it burnt all.
Yeah, right, right.
Remember, and then it went up and came out.
So anyway, provide a fire department and good fire inspection.
What do we do about that first objective? Do we need to change that in view of the current requirements for code? Or should we change the wording of it?
The word's substantial, it just jumps out to me because that's, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's actually.
Yeah, that part should go because we're doing all, all inspections now. I think they've referred to the $10,000 limit before.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, okay. So, just ensure that all.
Sure that every new and renovated building in the town be built to applicable codes.
Just cross out substantially renovated.
Or ensure that the state building codes are fully enforced.
Well, see, the Wildcat now has sprinkler.
Built all applicable codes.
Okay.
And I would think that would be fire suppression in the commercial buildings and life safety in residential.
So we're just going to take out the word substantially?
Yes.
Okay.
Here's an example of, of something that worked down in Wentworth Development. A fellow tripped his fire alarm, and you can hear it quite plainly if you're within a mile. And so, he rushed out on his porch with his phone, and he was making all kinds of calls and everything. And I timed it, within five minutes, the first time I heard that alarm, the condo manager had a truck there and the fire department had a car there. And I said, that's, that's pretty good, that's a pretty good response.
There's a false alarm.
Excuse me?
Was it a false alarm?
It was a false, he's cooking steak or something.
I just saw that they have fire alarms now that warn you that it's about to go off. And if you're cooking, you wave at it or something.
It will put it off.
And it puts it off.
Oh, that's neat.
I just ripped mine out of the wall.
Well, I'll tell you one weekend, Etage Mountain Village has many, many of them.
Oh, yeah, you hear them?
Oh, yeah, it comes on the fire department. And you know it's gonna be a doomack, it's from cooking. You can almost guarantee it.
No bacon. Okay, develop a plan to maintain existing fire ponds and dry hydrants, establish new fire ponds, dry hydrants. It would certainly be something to, fire pond for any new developments. Because if we expand the living structures, we should protect them. And getting water to them is one of the problems. I mean, a tank truck just doesn't hold enough. I mean, they're good, but they run out of water, and you gotta get more, so.
So would we add that in after, where necessary, establish new fire ponds and dry hydrants wherever new, uh, new construction?
Well, I mean, I throw that out as an idea and then.
Developments, all right.
Yes.
Not just individual houses or anything.
And we can kick the wording around, you know, that's what I think we should do here.
Who would be developing the plan? Is that something, I mean, it implies that the planning board does, but I would think that the fire department would do it.
Yeah, that would be something for the fire department. And the road, and it's nice we have it lumped up now, the road agent and the fire department.
Maybe they already do have such a plan.
I'm sure he has ideas of where, or how they work and, and what it takes to keep the dry hydrants workable. You do have to flush them out every now and then, make sure that the muskrats haven't got.
I'm just wondering what was going on when this was written. Why this stuff was in there.
About the dry.
Well, both of them, just the first sentence about providing the fire department, I was just wondering what was happening that they were addressing.
But some of the dry hydrants have taken off. A lot of them have taken, have taken off. They just throw the holes in with the string.
I'm just wondering, you know, I'm saying, what if there's something pertinent that was going on, they said, let's just address it in this way if it's not relative, relevant anymore to be put in the master plan. That's all I'm asking.
I remember there was quite a discussion about the fire, you know, whose responsibility was Whitney Pond. That's always been a. That's always been a source.
It always was Whitney's. They put the pond in, and I called Dawn Murray, and Dawn Murray said, it was always Whitney's was responsible for the pond.
Right, because I can remember.
They used to dredge it out, you know.
Out there in the crawler, pushing all the muck out.
Yeah, dredge it out, because they use it for swimming, but it was always Whitney's responsibility.
So they're probably not still allowed to dredge it, right? State laws have changed on that, I guess.
What?
Haven't the state laws changed on whether or not you can dredge?
I think you can, because it is a.
I can put a pond anyplace on my land.
Do you have the previous master plan?
I don't even have that approved.
Yeah, but not with me.
I'm just wondering if this was carried over, if that was new.
No, I think this whole section was completely rewritten last time.
By hands.
Was there anything that you remember why?
Well, I think on a lot of these, is that.
Oh, it's all one good.
That we had. I can't remember whether it was a brainstorm session or what, but a lot of items that you felt, the plan board felt needed to be in the plan, and then we just tried to organize them together, and this was a case of, well, it's got all of the municipal services.
I see.
Together, and then, okay, this has to do with the fire department, this has to do with the highway department, and then just try to organize it in that way.
Gotcha.
So I think.
That makes sense.
It was more, I think it was more of a, just an organizational decision rather than any particular issue.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know if Mary Lake has one.
They have the pond that they're definitely.
I don't believe he might have, he says he has.
But I can't.
Yeah.
How do you handle?
That makes total sense, I forgot we were in the municipal section, so that makes, they just wanted to cover that, saying.
Right.
I got it.
The little pond, right? Merely.
I'm making dick crazy looking.
No, but you've got me thinking a lot of.
Actually, what you've got, you're in the background information. The last two master plans were emphasis on just.
I think we didn't do a lot to update it, we may reorganize some of it, but I think we left a lot of the wording the same.
The goals and objectives are here. This chapter two.
I remember a teacher who was out of attorney leave, so they had to hire somebody, but he.
So yes, there were.
He asked me to come back.
The goals and objectives.
I know, you burn time, collected city, so I have to help my hours down.
Right. Yeah, yeah, this is carried over from the last one.
Yep. Provide information inspection and suppression from inherent dangers of fire and a level of service required by the community. I think those same words are right.
You know, I don't have to reinvent the wheel for this, you know, I don't think a lot of the stuff we're using, we're gonna still use.
Oh, right. I think that's what we get to do right now. Provide an adequate level of enforcement services required by the town, both now and in the future. Continue funding to ensure quality law enforcement and police services for all town residents. It's a good statement. Emergency medical services should be maintained at the highest quality appropriate to meet the needs of the community. I think we do that with the Jackson Bartlett ambulance service. And I'm sure that the town will continue to support that. The water precinct shall provide an adequate supply of water to meet the safe drinking water needs and fire suppression needs of the precinct members.
Is the last objective been accomplished?
Investigate the potential subsurface? I don't believe so, but if they ever had to, there's awfully good records with all the drilling companies and the state. They pretty much have mapped out the aquifers and have pretty good idea.
You can get the information on all of the wells.
I guess I was just wondering whether that objective still needed to be there or not.
Yeah, I don't know that it does. There's a question mark right next to that.
Do we wanna check with the water precinct to see if they have any recommendations, so we would be checking with other departments?
Actually, that would be a good question for the water precinct, is if they have future looking plan for water.
Right, you know, one of the things you might consider doing is just drafting a notice to all departments and saying, we're in the process of reviewing our master plan, do you have any input for what we should consider for your department?
Hmm, and I could even, maybe give them a copy of their section.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You can't upload it. Well, she's just comedy.
I knew that was going to happen.
Okay, make a copy for all departments of their part of the master plan. And as for my.
I think we have a true.
But I think that that'll probably be a good way to approach them, because when they'd have what the wording was last time.
On the next policy, I would strengthen wording on this.
Okay, efforts to institute a cost-effective and environmentally sound solid waste disposal system.
Shall we support it? To support efforts, why don't we just say, maintain a cost-effective and environmentally sound waste disposal system and leave it at that? Can I ask a question?
Okay.
The solid waste of disposal, is that referring to a sewer system? Oh, solid waste is a dump. Oh, that's the dump, transfer station.
Transfer station.
Okay, okay, why don't we just say the transfer station as opposed to, I was just confused on that, I always said solid waste disposal, well, had to do with a sewer system. At least in New Jersey, that's what it referred to.
Right. That's true.
So.
So why don't we put to, or get the wording over to transfer station?
Yeah, but.
So something like at the transfer station, maintain a cost-effective and environmentally sound solid waste disposal system.
If we just put parentheses, solid waste disposal system, you know, transfer station. So we're identifying what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Right, but to somebody not in town, transfer station, what do you, what's.
Most of them call it, no.
But if we begin it by at the transfer station, maintain a cost-effective and environmentally sound.
Well, what she's saying, it's still right, there's no context if you don't know what a transfer station is.
I think the whole sentence.
Right.
They put the dump.
The town dump.
That's right. They have a road and holders, it's the dump road.
Yeah.
I think lots of places now call it a transfer.
They call them transfer stations, a lot of places.
Why? Because it's dumps. It's not fancy.
I would just put parentheses after system, the transfer station, therefore you're identifying it.
Okay. The Jackson Bartlett.
Jackson Bartlett.
Transfer station.
That's it.
I'd love to go with that.
But it's.
We only had a disposal.
I mean, you may dump it from your car, but it doesn't stay there, it gets transferred to a place where it takes up its permanent residence.
So the J and B transfer station and mall?
And mall, Jackson Mall, Jackson Bartlett Mall.
And recycling center.
Okay.
And recycling.
And the dump store.
The dump store.
Well, we recycle it in various ways.
It's very busy.
So how do we have it now? I think we're saying, maintain a cost-effective and environmentally sound solid waste disposal system, parentheses, the Jackson Bartlett transfer station and recycling center.
Excellent.
How about at, maybe at the Jackson.
Oh, so not in parentheses?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Maybe at the Jackson Bartlett.
I think that's a good idea.
Sort of sounds like we might do it somewhere else.
Yeah, please, put in the Jackson picture.
What about the last objective?
Is that still even being considered?
Well, we changed our contract and developed a relationship with Berwind.
Bartlett, oh, Bartlett, you mean?
Yeah, we.
Well, where it gets trucked to.
Yeah.
So that's, I think, an ongoing discussion, that's good for.
Wasn't it just renewed?
I can't remember how many years.
Not that long ago.
So maybe we should say, instead of investigate, continue to support regional solid waste solutions?
Yes.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Because you get the best deal in Berwind.
I'll show you the problem.
Oh, God, they tax it, holy mother of God. I think it was 3150, but it's gone now. And girl, it's 30 something. It's too bad, because they're good people.
All right, we will continue that. All right, availability of safe, livable, high-quality, compatible, portable housing shall be maintained to accommodate the needs of a diverse population. Well, we have spent some time discussing that subject. But we know about enforce life safety code.
Now, is our term life safety code, does that sort of encompass everything? Is that a, or is that a specific code?
That's a specific code.
I think we should change it to something like, you know, continue to enforce all applicable codes, building codes, building and fire codes, or something like that.
Building and safety codes. Small b.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it says in accordance with all ethical regulations.
Right.
Just in force.
So enforce all, and rather than in capitals, put it in small letters, all life safety codes. Because then you can include the building codes, the NFPA.
I guess it's just, it's strange that it's under human services versus the other part where under fire.
Well, it's more than fire, life safety code, safety of.
Yeah, it goes right to, you know, how high a stairtrap, you know, it can be.
Lighting.
Where the handrails are.
Yeah. So it's much more than.
Egress windows on the second floor, if there's no.
Right.
Fire escape, I mean, it goes on. Okay. Access to residential structures by emergency vehicles, I think we do that. Continue to require access to residential structures, be suitable for emergency vehicles.
We said something, I think, that if you got more than two houses on one driveway, or was it more than one house on the driveway?
No, I think it's more than two.
Okay, that had to be. But I remember people saying, you know, you ought to be able to put a kitchen sink under your back and build your cabin in wood.
Well, you can, and then the town can give the building or occupancy permit to that and just say, don't expect the fire department to show up if your cabin burns to the ground. I mean.
They sign, they sign a waiver.
Yeah, they have to sign a waiver.
So I remember there was some discussion, I don't really remember how it was resolved, as to whether it's fine to put your own cell in jeopardy for your own house, or if it's okay to have a second house on that driveway also be in jeopardy.
We have enough space between houses that I don't think that your house burning down is going to affect my house, I mean, it's gonna ruin the view, but.
If we have a driveway that accommodates two houses and does not accommodate a fire vehicle, because the first guy who put in the driveway, put his own house in, didn't care if it was accommodating a fire vehicle, and then somehow subdivides it, I mean, I would think that in our process of subdivision, we'd say, hey, well, we're not gonna make a subdivision here and allow this other house to be built unless there's fire safety.
Right, either that or sign off on it, I mean.
Don't you get the road.
Traftons and then the people that were in here, I can't remember his name.
Oh, God, Simons.
Simons, right. And they were for it, I thought he was against it, but he was for the subdivision. But their access is tough, and they go in past Traftons and then the road really deteriorates, but.
Just about.
Right, and that's the way they want it. But I think that maybe we should be more forthcoming on those situations, hey, look, folks, we don't feel that you're providing a driveway a way that emergency vehicles can come into.
But they had a fire, Simons, and they put, the fire department put it out, you don't drive a sleeping bag or a pool gas furnace.
And that's funny, why, why do I not?
Because it caused a fire.
I think what's most important is that the person potentially purchasing the other property knows that there's a mechanism, that they know that there's an issue there, that they choose to purchase the property knowing that there is, you know, limited access, they're making the same decision that the first property owner is.
Right.
The risk is that.
Do they also have to sign a waiver?
They should, because I would ensure that they know what they're getting into.
Well, how is that, Evan's lot working out for the guy that's trying to buy it and the bridge, and is that going to work out? Because this poor guy is going to.
This is what, pardon me, but this is what really pisses me off about Zola.
Honestly.
To be truthful, don't put that on your teeth.
It's written right down here.
But it really does, because Johnny Jump comes in and, oh, we love him, he's wonderful, then this other poor soul comes in, get him.
Do you think that still happens?
Well, well, right now, of course, we gave him the right of way. Now, if he had, who's his name, Jakes, Burr Phillips said, well, I told him if he got some land down here, it would, that'll all disappear.
Right, it negates the whole.
So they're surveying today.
Oh, are they?
So would you give me this land?
But that's a situation where the lot was on the other side of a brook, was trying to change hands, the bridge that goes across it would not support a fire truck.
It wouldn't have to go there, Dick, they're not going to go there anyways, they're going to suck it out of the brook.
Right, and so if they, let's see, because they didn't have the land, it was just a right of way to it, it was going to have to be this whole spec.
A bridge that the state doesn't even have.
Sixty or seventy thousand dollar bridge that's now, what, a couple of tele, three, four telephone poles and, you know, some pressure treated, perfectly fine. I mean, everybody's happy with it, except it wouldn't meet that access by emergency vehicles, so.
If, their big mistake was selling Robbie White, the Estream trailer off of it.
Right.
If that had been there, it would never existed, none of this would have existed.
It'd all be grandfathered in.
Could we change that second objective to say require that access to residential structures be suitable for use by emergency vehicles, and then semicolon or something or another sentence, where access to a single residential structure does not meet this requirement, ensure that each property owner will sign a waiver against town liability.
Is that an objective, though?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that's the wrong, that's the wrong place. This is just objectives, that's not, that's not policy.
Sounds like policy.
That's not so.
But don't you have a low standards?
Okay, so we say, Scott was saying, the objective could be that we would develop a zoning requirement, a zoning requirement, okay?
But so, Dick, I think it will resolve, they are surveying today.
So you would leave the first sentence there, to continue to require, to require, and then to develop a zoning ordinance, or it would have to be a zoning ordinance that would.
Some of them are each other, the two, one says require, the second says if you don't have it, to say you understand you don't have it.
Well, at least, I mean, apparently it has been policy that we've been doing it, but we haven't maybe always.
No, I think it's a good idea that we codify it in some fashion, I'm saying that particular sentence, we're saying two different things at the same time.
Or if you said require that access to new residential structures, if you add the word new.
Well, but there are already structures out there that don't meet the requirements and get sold or resold or re-sold.
Right.
And we should have each owner sign.
And, yeah, I think that any new owner should be made aware.
Oh, yeah.
He should be aware of it when he buys it.
Right.
And who tells him that? Does the real estate person tell him that?
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, nothing tells them anything.
Not if it might get in the way of a sale.
That's correct.
That's right.
Well, there is now a fair amount of liability on that kind of thing for real estate agents, right?
Yeah, if they say, if they, if they knew about it, they didn't say.
Right.
Yeah, but if they're not aware of it, still the poor guy that buys the house doesn't know it, is the problem, it's not disclosed.
It can be recorded, you know, makes away covenants and such, so.
I think in recent years, at least, we have insisted that it be recorded. I don't know about earlier times.
Unless it was in the record, you know.
So do we want to develop something, or what is it we want to say here?
Well, I'd put down develop a disclaimer.
Okay.
I mean, that's just a note, but.
Would it be through, enforced through the zoning ordinance?
What does our zoning ordinance say now? You're good, man.
Sarah's got it, though. See, she's all prepared.
Is there a list of, have all the zoning ordinances, I mean, does anybody else have it?
Yeah, it's published, like this is.
Well, I know that, but nobody else gets it.
I'll get you one right now if you want. It's flavored. Okay?
Lip cream on top?
Sounds like a fire.
You have a zoning ordinance.
Set a master plan, only one zone.
How about subdivision? It's not, I don't think it's in here.
Definition of privacy says, um, serving not more than two dwellings, except in the case of cluster or subdivision multifamily, we need to get four. Does that think about subdivision on page four?
So the letter, if I'm understanding what people are saying is that you have the first sentence on that require that access to residential structures be suitable for use by emergency vehicles, and then probably a new sentence saying, develop a zoning ordinance requirement to ensure that where access to a single residential structure does not meet this requirement, each property owner will sign a waiver against town liability, is that what people are expecting to see?
What, will the town be liable if?
If the town, if people from stable town approved it or didn't disapprove it?
Would it be, I mean, do we need to say require access, et cetera, because we already have a situation where there's more than two residences on the road, do we require that in our zoning ordinance? Seems like we already doing.
Yeah, it's a big redundant, I think.
If we simply say the second sentence.
Let's see, to ensure that any future owner is aware, is that a?
But if you're going to require it, it's almost negating what you're.
I'm saying that we already have a zoning ordinance that requires certain situations, unless we're talking about changing the zoning ordinance.
No, wait, well, I don't, we don't, I have, I have found it in the zoning ordinance that they required.
It just says two houses share a driveway, it doesn't say anything about emergency vehicles.
Right, no.
I think that's an RSA.
Emergency vehicles?
They have to have access to.
You define driveway, where do we say that?
The definition driveway does not have that.
Or driveway that only, that a driveway can only serve two residences.
It's the definition of a driveway, and it's letting it serves access.
Right.
It says to it.
We define as to what a driveway is.
I think you're right about RSA.
Services on two residences, but we don't say.
So whatever that says.
Any driveway that only serves two residences.
I have seen, I think I've seen that.
Well, if I know what it is, but we don't specify.
We say serving not more than two dwelling units, not more than, so it would be one or two.
Right, we don't, do we say anywhere that you can only have a driveway if it serves up to two residences and no more?
No, we don't say that.
We don't really say that you can't.
Wouldn't that come under? But wouldn't that come under the, you have to have so much, a hundred feet, you know, for a lot, luggage, and all.
And I guess we do it by default, we say what a driveway is, and because it can only serve up to two residences, then by default, we need to have something beyond a driveway to serve more than two residences. In either case, I think we accomplish in the zoning ordinance what we are saying in the objective.
But it's not about emergency vehicles, which is what I thought we were talking about.
Right, I'm just, because what we're talking, you know, if I were to modify the objective, we seem to be put in a situation of saying two different things at the same time. I don't see that we need to say, require that there be emergency access, because that's already in the zoning ordinance, I don't think it's up to the master plan to specify every single thing that's in the zoning ordinance already.
Right.
And so to me, an objective is to make some sort of change or develop something, and we're talking about change and developing this, and codifying the requirement that any future purchaser of a lot understand that there's limited access, if that's the situation.
I guess I just don't see where it says that at all about emergency vehicles and the zoning.
I have, I'm.
I don't think it does, I think it.
Yeah, I mean, it does.
We define what a driveway is.
Right, but I guess we're making, referencing something, I guess that I can't find where that exists.
I don't think it's, it's there by default. We define what a driveway is, and then if you can't, have, you can't have a driveway if you're servicing more than two residences, because then it's no longer a driveway.
Driveway serving more than.
It has to be something other than a driveway, which would be a town standard road. So we don't say you have to have a town standard road for more than two residences, but because we.
You can have a private road for more than two residences.
A private road, yeah, town standards.
Okay, Dick found it, page five.
Five point one?
Four.
Four one.
Four one five two.
Five two.
Driveways serving more than one dwelling unit shall be designed to accommodate prospective traffic and to meet the requirements.
Of the zoning ordinance. And any additional requirements of the fire department.
So then, all we really need to do is add a sentence to that, I would think that any driveway serving one dwelling unit not able to accommodate fire department requirements, something about that those owners shall sign a waiver against town liability, does that make sense?
But I guess like what Scott's saying is that's not our place to put in there.
It doesn't really belong.
That would be more a selectment issue, I think.
Well, there might, the objective in the master plan would be to develop the zoning ordinance that requires that waiver, possibly some recording that notifies future purchases.
Right, we're not.
We're basically exploring, no, we're exploring a deficiency.
But now there seems to be a disconnect within zoning, in one hand you define driveway as serving up to two residences, and then we say a driveway, I guess, where is it a driveway and where is it a private road? I think that's, it may not be.
It doesn't say anything. It doesn't say anything, if you have one house, it doesn't say anything about the fire department coming to your house, it says if you have two, you have to maintain for the fire department.
I guess we're calling it a driveway.
I'm just saying what this says, it says two houses, you have to, additional requirements of the fire department, if you have one house and a driveway, you don't have to.
Right, I'm saying, why do we define a driveway as serving up to two residences when, when there's more than one, it has to be something more than what we might think of as a driveway?
More like a private road?
I think, I think the definition of driveway ought to be changed to serving up, serving only up to one residence, and that would just make it less confusing. And then it's a private road beyond one residence, or it has to be a private road for more than one residence.
That sounds, yeah.
But the town won't be responsible for, there is.
Well, it says here, private road is.
Well, isn't a driveway private as private anyway, I think most driveways are private.
And the definition of private road is highway, street, road, avenue, not open to public use as a matter of right, it's for vehicle, vehicular travel, the maintenance or repair of which shall be borne by the subdivider abutting owners, landowners, or an association of abutting landowners. But also on page five, it said all driveways must be constructed to comply with standards set by the state of New Hampshire, so you would think that if they have, and the town of Jackson, so wouldn't you think that they'd have to meet certain standards?
Driveway, yeah, it's supposed to.
Yeah.
There's nothing saying that your driveway has to come to, you know, within a certain proximity to your house, if we're talking about emergency access, it's supposed to have a driveway that ends two hundred yards from your house, and you have a path through the woods from there, and that would.
It's a long way to carry groceries. No, that's your, that's your choice.
Again, I just think it's confusing.
See, that would be the case where a waiver would be needed, because we're not going to be able to service that.
Well, and that's, we don't, we really don't address how, you know, we talk about the quality of the driveway, the roadway, but we don't really address how far from, you know, the terminus of the driveway.
So you think that driveway should accommodate one dwelling?
I think as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned, the definition of driveway ought to be changed to only up to one residence, and that way there's no confusion as to what's a driveway, what is a driveway beyond.
And what's a private road, I mean, driveways go off of a private road.
If the roadway has to be different after there's, you know, a second, the second residence or more, then why do we define a driveway as up to two residences? Because it just seems like there's a disconnect there.
But I guess going back to this objective, I mean, require that access to residential structures be suitable for emergency vehicles, that was an objective they wanted to develop, right? That's what we're basically saying.
That's what it sounds like.
And so we're still, I guess the point is, we're still there.
Yeah.
We're still trying to develop.
Yeah, we just, it hasn't been addressed, so that's something we can.
But to me, that says that every driveway, no matter how many residences, should, should, you know, be sufficient for emergency vehicles, so unless we're looking to change the zoning ordinance as to what can be done.
Well, I think it's.
Single residence, I'd say that part, that objective doesn't need to be there at all, and maybe we ought to look more at the objective to make sure that waivers.
Well, that's what I, I agree.
And that there's some recorded to inform future owners.
Right, just.
No, I think that's good, I think that cleans up a lot of wording, so that.
Yeah, because there's nothing right now.
What do they mean by this, and what do they mean by that, and make it so that you read it and know what to do.
So that comes out?
Well, I think it has to be cleaned up, and Betsy wrote something that makes sense, I think.
So I had said something about where access to a single residential structure does not meet this requirement, which may not apply if we've taken the earlier one out, each property owner will sign a waiver against town liability.
So I don't think we should say that, I think we should just say more like, we should develop a policy to address properties that don't have access and how to.
How to deal with it.
Yeah, how to deal with it, and then in that doing so.
That's the objective.
Yeah, exactly.
The policy will come out of that objective.
Yeah, great.
Okay. Inventory existing accessory apartments, rental housing.
This is yours.
Now, we're going to get that out of the build-out? Is that going to give us an inventory of existing? Accessory apartments, rental housing, apartment buildings. So, do we keep that in there as an objective, do we wait and see?
I would say yes, because we're gonna, we're doing the build-out studies, that'll be part of it.
Okay, see what the build-out study gives us. Shall we consider methods of providing financial incentives for developments of small complexes, five or fewer units of affordable housing?
We already have that actually in our rooms, we've already completed that one.
Okay. So we can eliminate that as an objective? Correct?
Yes, I do think so.
Well, we may as well save words, we're going to have enough words in there. At the end, anyway.
What about the next objective?
Broaden the availability of affordable housing for elderly and low to moderate income people through creative, creative.
Creative alternatives.
Alternatives.
Well, I guess we've really done that too. We've created some incentives.
Yeah, incentives.
Caves, yards, teepees?
I would say that's still an ongoing objective, I'm sure that has to be accomplished.
Well, you obviously haven't seen anybody come forward to do it, so that's the.
Right. More different creative.
Well, we could add the word incentives with alternatives.
Yeah, okay, great. Definitely through our accessory housing units, that's a possible way that we've increased it, but there's no way to get a handle on whether or not that's happened. We don't really know.
Okay, reexamine the issue of accessory apartments, determine if they provide a viable option in creating affordable housing. Do we have to reexamine that?
I'm not sure how we do that.
I mean, we, we now.
We change the zoning.
We change the zoning, we have provisions for, so.
So I don't know how we can reexamine the issue. So do we omit that one?
Well, I would admit it now. Because it's really not an objective, I mean. We can refine it, we can see if it's working, but we, I don't think we have to restate it as an objective. Okay, continue to permit, permit apartments to be located on the second floor of store and office buildings in the village.
It's a hot objective, keep doing what we're already doing. We put a lot of those in here.
I don't know why that's in there.
Yeah.
I should strike that.
I would drop that myself. I think we have enough wording on building, zoning, accessories. Okay, limit clustered housing to areas suitable for intensive development. Again, we've got the, the words down.
I say we just strike the last three objectives.
Yeah. Thank you. Just my thoughts. Okay, it's eight thirty-five, how late would you all like to go?
I'd say we just add one more page.
It's like, we don't have two minutes in this football.
Well, the last minute, the last time.
Yeah, I was just adding, three forty-five today.
Well, why don't we just, why don't we just finish this page seven, and we can, after the, either the next work session or the next meeting, we can take up the last page. We're not going to, you know, file one.
No, and as I talk with Tara Bamford, I'll try to keep you all as posted as I can. Probably through the office, because they can just push a button and send messages out to everybody. Has everybody gotten minutes and stuff, okay? Because I've tried to.
Not sent from you, but sent from other people.
Right, but I get it done.
That's called a management style, right?
Right.
Right, not the most efficient, but.
Or you could call it just a computer style.
I got the notice today, I was thrilled, because sometimes I forget, I'm like, it is very disorganized.
I thought it was next Thursday. Planning board meetings have been the second Thursday of the month for each.
I walk in a room with two light switches and not sure which one turns on which light.
Okay, well, let's get to the bottom of page seven. A policy the town shall provide, sound educational system of the highest quality. Okay.
Do you have to have the word sound, just provide a educational system of the highest quality?
Yeah, I'd strike sound.
Good idea.
So that would be an educational.
Yeah.
System of the highest quality.
The second objective seems to sort of reiterate, doesn't it? Should we drop the second one?
Support high educational standards for the school system.
Doesn't that sort of reiterate the policy?
Yep.
No.
Do we want to omit it, or are they going to?
It's fine with me to take it out, I, I mean, anytime we can streamline it without losing.
Think our money was getting printed.
Yep.
No, we're not going to say that, I'm printing, believe me. We'll find some other words to put in. So do you want to just get to the end of this one? No, you want to go, 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 go hard this next twenty minutes.
Well, some of these pages we go through without any change at all.
Okay, we'll find.
A good point. So are we knocking out that second objective?
And then, oh, yes, and then we're going to go, I think, to the next page, aren't we? Because I can get rid of the first objective there.
That's a good point.
I mean, get rid of all three of them, it's already been done.
Yep.
Oh. Oh. And out.
Yeah, only to, what, twenty seconds?
Yeah, we've done a lot of work there. Out, 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 good. Adequate medical and social services shall be available.
And E news maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, there's going to be E news in there too.
I, maybe we should even say the website for those who.
Yep.
Well, the media, okay. Well, wouldn't hurt to state the website, because some people may not realize we have a website, I want them to check.
Okay, if we're going to ensure adequate funding of pertinent human services for the community through warrant articles. I think that comes up every year, doesn't it?
All the little ones, yeah. All the little articles that come in.
Yeah. But I don't think it's, it's a bad objective, it never really goes away. Have we ever provided social and economic data for effective long-range planning of community services?
I don't think we've provided, but we've obtained.
Okay.
Because that's more what we're able to do by contacting North Country Council.
Right, because that's what I thought, one of those handouts that I had.
Is the build-out going to have some of that information too?
She did, I can see it from here.
We are providing this?
Yeah.
Well, that's true.
But, you know, this was one of them that we got from.
So maybe obtain and provide?
Obtain and provide, okay.
Throw that right, the library one, throw that right in the library. Throw it right at the library's lab and see if they want to. Care to add to that, of course.
But you said to move the objective?
I would say, well, we're going to pass it on to the departments anyway, so just make sure that they get a copy of that too. We just have.
I should have something nice to say, so.
So, what do we leave at the policy level of library, media facility?
I'd say we leave it as is.
We've got a pretty good facility.
The last objective might be dropped.
Right.
Okay.
That's something we've accomplished.
Yep.
Anything else, this is, continue doing.
I think that we should also add in the first objective to reference to technology. Our books and materials and.
Multimedia. Yeah, technology resources.
Technology resources.
I think a legitimate library has more than one book. That's what that means.
Is that what that means?
I'm just kidding.
Does it promote, stimulate knowledge, foster culture, enjoyment?
We already have a library.
It's, I think I was just saying to keep it funded, should be properly funded to provide adequate services. That's what I root to it as.
Yeah, just the word legitimate, I don't like that word.
How about outstanding?
That's fine.
Majestic?
Okay.
My red lens worn off.
So we're pretty good there, and we're really running down, folks, I can tell, I can tell by the sparkle in your eyes.
One of us standing up, it seems to be necessary.
Yeah, that's one way to stay awake. Okay, here we go, recreational opportunities in the town shall be maintained and enhanced. Support public and private recreational programs within the town. Okay, that'd be the ski areas, area. Cross-country, we do, we obviously do. And then, probably, you know, we've got a ball field, the kids play soccer. And we already have the third objective done, I mean, right?
Yeah.
Trails, yeah, there already is.
We don't have it as permitted uses.
But they're established.
They are established, but they're not listed as permitted uses. And that's, I think, a significant part of that. Remember, we discussed it a long time ago, for some reason, people were opposed to making it a permitted use. But I, I don't really remember why.
You might not be able to put a trail on your property.
I don't know, I mean, so, I guess maybe the issue is, if we make it a permitted use, then are we saying that Black Mountain is not a, a non-conforming use? I don't remember if that's what the problem was or where it was.
Well, it's not listed as use now for the rural residential district.
Right, and yet it's pretty critical to the town's economic base.
You're saying that permitted, it would make Black Mountain not, not conforming?
Well, I mean, it wouldn't, I think it wouldn't change the, the fact that its buildings are non-conforming.
Right, this is talking about trails.
Exactly, so I would think.
Black trails are not, not conforming already.
The fact that they're not, so, I, I don't remember what people's problem was with it before.
Yeah, because the way it's said, uses, under rural residential district, a building or structure may be erected or used, and a lot may be used or occupied only for the following purposes and in accordance with the following provisions. And it is, to paraphrase, number one is residences, single, multi.
I don't think it makes sense for us to have recreational trail use.
So, does, does that mean that, you know, if I were adjacent to your land and you allowed to turn center across your land, and I said, I don't want, two years coming near my land, I could.
I'm going to sue you because it's not permitted use? That's something you might grow that root.
I don't think it makes any sense.
Okay, so, establish it, leave it in.
Yeah.
Okay, in. I encourage preservation of public access to recreational opportunities.
I think that's important too, and by the very fact, you know, we hear that the zoning board reviews the master plan to determine intent. By the very fact that we have things like this in there, if they were to get a complaint about recreational trail usage. They might at least see that we're saying it ought to be something that we're.
Okay, we'll leave that. Support initiatives to develop parkland and other public space in ways that retain the natural flavor of the area while allowing for parking and other conveniences such. Within a reasonable proximity. Let's see about the other conveniences, now, we're talking about outhouses or hot dog stands, what are the. Warming huts.
I know ski touring is hoping to be able to have some sort of a one hut, I think it's on National Forest, and I don't really know exactly where, but, so that would really be part of town, so I guess, but.
I just feel like this is like a mishmash of things in this paragraph lumped in. It's recreation, and they talk about zoning and uses and permitted uses, and it just, it's.
Throw together.
It's, I say we stop there and start. It's, I say we stop there and start, you know, fresh at this, at the top of this last policy.
Okay.
Because it is so, it's, it's a confluence of things.
Really? I have, um, just to jump back on the one before with the objective under the library where it says to initiate programs to stimulate the use, I would support the library's initiative too, because they're doing quite a few programs, aren't they?
Okay, great.
Okay, sports fans, what do you say?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.